Kevin's not here. I was just gonna ask Kevin for review of all the funding breakdowns.
It's called order the work session for the common council, May eleventh, twenty seventeen. This is the part of our meeting where we spend a little bit of extra time going through the agenda, asking any questions. Soliciting any comments from department heads or interested people. We'll begin our regular session at five thirty P M. There's no issues for executive session tonight that I know of, unless any of you feel the need to go into an executive session.
You?
Any items you'd like to some further discussion on? Please, Councilor Dowdell.
Item G about the Oklahoma slope stabilization project, that is a FEMA. Is that FEMA funded?
That is correct.
So, the whole thing is FEMA funded?
That is correct. You're still in the process of getting a scope change that adjusts the total funding amount from nine hundred and ninety-nine seven thousand dollars up to about one point six million.
And how do we do that? I mean, we're going up against what? To adjust it to one point six?
Well, we've got the email communications where they indicate that it's going to be approved.
Okay.
So, we're in the process. But we don't have the, you know, formal change scope yet. But we should hopefully have it sorted.
And also item H, the engineering services for bridge, is that all, all the bridges?
No, that is the four local bridges that are not on the state's inspection program. So, the Sanders Street Bridge, the Vescry Bridge, the Weblawn Bridge, and the Oklahoma Street Bridge.
Does that include, I'm sorry, does that include the footbridge behind the high school?
Yes, the Weblawn Bridge behind the high school.
Because there was an inspection on that not terribly long ago, correct?
About two years ago.
Was it that long ago?
Yeah, it's trying to figure out, get out of program where we inspect them every two years.
Okay, because I think the school district had an issue, and then we brought in our own engineering for bridge inspection, and there was quite a difference on.
The, uh, there was, um, they were mostly similar inspection reports. Uh, the bridge needs some work. Some, all of the work that needed to be done immediately was done. Some of the other work that is important and not critical, some of that still remains to be done.
Thank you.
What's been the process for RFPs for the engineers on these two projects, G and H?
Uh, the, um, the, I just did a request for proposals for the bridge inspections, and, um, received two proposals. And, uh, the qualifications were pretty comparable, and both of them were very highly qualified. And this one, the price is about six thousand dollars less.
And for G?
Uh, G, we did that through the, um, the L T S A program, or consultant selection program, the locally, uh, uh, local design services agreements, and did the consultant selection process through that and selected that for the SPAM tech. And, uh, the expansion services are an extension of their existing agreement for design services.
For H, you're getting back to, I mean, for G. But for G, how, how do you decide just how extensively you want to solicit for a two hundred thousand dollar engineering contract?
The, that is an extension of the existing agreement. So, they did the design based on qualifications based committee selection. And, uh, and then this is just an extension, and it is a, uh, a time material. So, there's a resident engineer onsite, pretty much full-time, plus some office support services, supplemental review, chapter on review, a few progress meetings, and that type of the things. So, it's only based on the, um, actual hours it takes to complete the work.
So, it could come in less than two hundred thousand dollars based on their presence and experience?
Absolutely, yeah, that, uh, you could think of that as a not-to-exceed price.
Okay. Any other questions on G or H?
Might as well discuss some of the concerns that were raised regarding the North Country Food Co-ops request. And there seemed to be consensus that, uh, those two spaces, and even with the buffer of the, of the right-hand lane being closed, might pose a danger to, you know, those who were gathering there. And, you know, I know that we have a representative here, but, um, is it appropriate to ask questions now? Or should we wait for, um, that representative's comments at the, uh, regular meeting?
Certainly, you can frame any questions.
Yeah.
You want to resolve questions, you can do that.
So, we got.
Can you, can you just clarify for me the concerns raised at what point?
Uh, well, we got a bunch of emails from Joe McMahon and Keyroy, Lieutenant Keyroy and, uh...
Dean.
Dean, yeah, thank you.
With all the concerns?
Listed with highlights, I'm guessing.
I missed it.
I didn't miss it.
Oh, okay.
Jesus, no.
Well, do you have your copy? Yeah, yeah, no.
I don't.
Um, well, maybe Dean could summarize, because I know I paid attention to them all, if you don't mind, Dean.
Yes, I mean, the consensus was that we want to make sure for closing up lane to traffic that there was appropriate safeguards. So, whether, I don't believe it was addressed in the application necessarily. So, we don't know what those safeguards would be, but I would expect them to be some kind of concrete barrier, some way to guarantee that if a vehicle had gone off track, that it would run down faster.
Right.
So, unless those were concerned, or addressed rather, I don't think Joe's, Lieutenant's, or myself's concerns would have been alleviated.
Right. And so, the recommendation is there be, that there be some kind of, you know, the typical concrete barriers put, uh, behind the parking space into the lane, or, you know, I mean, just on that space there?
I don't want to be in a position to tell an applicant what their application is.
Okay, all right.
So, it was a concern that was raised.
Right.
It would fall back.
And that's a recommendation that might, uh, help to assuage our concerns?
And if, and if it wasn't, then we could also amend the application however the council felt was appropriate.
Right.
And the other concern that I had was we, uh, we had a similar type of request from Planned Parenthood several months ago.
Right.
There were certain safety concerns raised in that request, so I would want to make sure that the council was consistent.
Was consistent, mhm, absolutely. Okay, um...
Other precincts I can recall, block parties, we've seen, I think Iris has had one of those a few years ago. But I think that was a block that driven entire streets.
That's right.
You didn't have to flow by. If you were to block off one lane and you weren't, were to go the concrete barrier route, I think the applicant would need to be informed of the cost of that.
Right.
I imagine probably in the neighborhood of three to five hundred dollars to have those blocks put down and taken back up.
Right.
We, um, we actually had a quarter minute debate about this. We haven't been able to get the jersey barriers, the concrete barriers. Uh, D B W does not have them, and L D does not have them. So, the, the proposed, uh, buffer zone going down the one-lane traffic, there wouldn't actually be people in the roadway. It would be a buffer zone between the parking spots where the action would be and, uh, the traffic. So, it's in between the little concrete barrier and one lane buffer.
Yeah, but I think I, I kind of got from your concern that, that wouldn't necessarily address the, uh, the situation in which a car goes out of control. There would be no protection, right? So, um, is there any recommendation that you can make off the top of your head that could convince the council that measures will be taken? I know that's kind of a board decision, right?
Yeah, kind of a board decision. I mean, if we can get access to the barriers, I know that we're gonna need at least two for a permanent park anyway. Um, but there is, I'm, as far as I'm told, no place to get that. Which is really unfortunate. Um, is there another barrier which, uh, which you guys might deem suitable?
No, I, I thought, I'm sorry if I'm trying to catch up on this here, though. I thought the original discussion was to see if you didn't have to have the concrete barrier, that some other structure could be constructed.
This is for the, for the grand opening.
This is just for the grand opening. This is just a three-hour event.
So, I don't know of anything. Does anybody else know of anything? Does the D B W know of anything? Soft horses wouldn't do. It's gotta be something that the, that the.
Do you need the water-filled barriers?
Water-filled barriers.
Yes.
That's what I'd asked a couple of years ago. It was no at that time.
It was no?
The answer was no at that time, but I think you suggested we look into it more deeply.
Yeah, um, no, but that would require a purchase.
I mean, I have to, I think that's my board, but, uh, we talked about that yesterday.
Right.
That, and they, we're pretty much open to, to make it happen.
Right, and, but, but the other problem is that you will need to consider such a, such a barrier for the installation of your parklet as well.
Right.
Right, so, I mean, that's something you need to get.
Right.
I don't know, it seems like we may have to table this until that.
I was just about to say that. It sounds like there are just too many unknowns.
Right.
And approvals needed.
But, you know, if you can get that all organized for next Thursday, you're still set for your opening day.
I would also ask, what would your insurance certificate? Would they require the barriers? Are they asking about that?
That's a good question. I can take that back to my people if they ever have a question.
And maybe for our next meeting, we could also consider do more research in the water-filled barriers. You may be willing to purchase them, knowing you can use them from year to year to year, and empty and fill them yourself each year.
Right.
Yeah, that will, that would alleviate your cost of having the city install the concrete barriers, so.
Because the parklet that is being used for the season, how is that being barricaded?
Um, in the plan that we have, we were using, uh, we were told we'd use two jersey barriers on either side of the parklet to walk them out. So, the concrete barriers.
In fact, construct the kind of innovative, creative platform that we were talking about, because there are none available.
No, they make it themselves.
No, no.
Grant, Peter?
I'm sorry, I was talking.
The Little League lighting?
Yes. The, uh, Little League has secured, um, a second grant. They do hope, um, with the board's approval, or the council's approval tonight, that, that will expedite the, uh, delivery of the, um, of the lights, and will enable them to be installed, um, within, hopefully, a three-week period.
That's what you call a public-private partnership, I'd say.
Would you like any additional discussion on the various events, the street closings for the summer season?
Are they the same? They're, in what ways are they different? Because I, I just assumed they were the same, sorry. Did you change them?
The street?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, um, no, actually, I was just looking, I was gonna ask Beth at the break. Uh, I did notice on July ninth, for the mayor's cup, or that one too, that won't be re-closed for the entire day, so that it only needs to be closed until five on Sunday at half. So, can we amend that?
Sure.
But other than that, no, they're all the same.
The, the route is the same as last year?
For the fourth of July, yeah.
Any other questions? Guess we'll then take a short recess until five thirty and begin the official meeting.
Mikes? Mikes? Um, planters? Yeah.
Sold them.
Well, I hope you got a good price for them, because you're gonna buy them back.
He's gotta, he's gotta start selling the cider.
Dale, did we get this tool? Did we look at this tool last week?
Yes. Is.
Is it this?
It's the one where we look at the projections.
I think, I'll just have to. I didn't know. This is, this is like the ones we've been using from.
Yeah, so.
So, what's the aim tool?
Okay.
Was, I thought it might be the one that he posted.
That was, that was Richard's, yeah.
Yes.
That'd be more complicated one.
Yeah, right, pages and pages. But, I mean, I figure we'll use them all.
It is.
Maybe use the shorter ones to look at them.
I think we've already actually, I think we've already actually done enough to work, too.
It is? It's fast?
A judge, or a councilor, if you didn't want to sign either, yep.
It's, it's, remember the one they rejected last, that at the time? It had the yellow column, and it had the opportunity to put in plug-in things.
That's not the one that you took, so you're winding down?
And then there was a shorter version that Mike presented. Different one that John presented.
John.
And I think the first one we saw was Richard's. And it was, it's like Becky said, it's like, yeah, the one that was pages and pages.
And then remember, there were little tabs at the bottom, and you could press it and get different. So, you, you're still, yeah.
I remember seeing this before.
Yeah, this is just a summary. This isn't, this isn't a projection.
The other one's a projection.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think this. I think you got it. Did we get a copy of that?
I saw something on E T D that most casters would use it, but, you know, I can't remember if it was, um, like that. But, that would, no, I would not be seeing it. So, they came and they said, this is what you need to do. You need to, out, on the outside of it, you drill the tunnel, because otherwise they don't feel safe.
Yeah, so I, I just, I work more than.
When did that happen?
Now, I want that. So, that's why I know.
So, I finally went by and had a look at the series, and I saw the tree. Yeah, it's pretty impressive.
It's cleanable?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's brushed, because, like, you know, I got the gray.
Yeah, exactly. That is, did you put that as a cap?
Freshly clocked. Well, I think it broke. Freshly clocked, or it's in bronze.
Here you go.
So, that's awesome.
Right, well, not like the bathroom. And he'll, he'll seal off the kitchen.
What is love? Baby.
Next year. Law on one of the, between two bedrooms to be a mastermind. Because there wasn't law there years ago.
For Russell. For Russell fans of.
Where is that? Oh, when we were doing the cleanup, I saw some stuff.
I wonder, I wonder if when they were painting, if they were going.
Oh, yeah, that was. Well, it was stupid, so I hope they're gonna be gone. Yeah, it does.
That was one of them. That was where we looked at the projections for that stairs. Yeah, it was in that bungalow. I don't know if we got, actually got a printout of that one, because it was so, you know, there were so many tabs.
Hi.
Is this something else I can do? Oh, okay. So, this is the no change? Okay.
Sorry to bother you. My file looking good. Thank you very much.
That's it?
That great deal.
Sorry, we went out last weekend. My buddy was a fly fisher, but he, this was down by Elizabeth Town.
That's a speckle.
Yeah, uh, fifteen inches.
Oh, my God, I thought the speckle was pretty much killed by the acid rain.
Yeah, so that, uh, and he was down, um, it's a small creek that empties out into, it's one of beautiful, okay? It's all bad, or how it's all of that. And then the day before, that was outside, we went outside on the other end. And, uh, the, 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 uh, by, um, peas, peas. And, uh, we got a bunch of these little guys here. That was on the water, and those were, they were much bigger than that.
What do you, what do you have, a six-pound rod?
Yep, a six, six-pound rod, yep. A six foot, a six-six, and, uh, he was using a swim rod.
Oh, he was?
Yeah.
But that other speckle is gorgeous.
Yeah, yep.
Wow, so the.
Water's high, but they're, when they're playing.
What did you, you were fly fishing?
Yes, I was using, uh, like a, um, bubble tuna, and I had a, had a deer's hair cast. Those are my good chance.
Yeah, the cast is always, I got them all over my hand.
Yeah, so I forgot, but at least it looks like something that they might want to hide, whether it's been or not, I don't know.
That's a beautiful fish.
So, look it out sometime.
All right, I gotta repair my waders, I got a hole in my flot.
Uh, shoo, boo.
I've actually got some stuff from Orbis to sell.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
You know, Mike's gonna be here?
No, he's not here.
No. Aren't we having a budget hearing tonight? Are you running it? Ready to begin? Begin the meeting of the common council with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the rule of justice for all.
Mayor Reed?
Present.
Councilor Armstrong?
Here.
Councilor Kelly? Councilor Dowdell?
Here.
Councilor Ensel?
Here.
Councilor Casper?
Here.
Councilor Pretzer?
Here.
Resolved at the minutes of the ready and meeting of the common council held on May fifth, two thousand seventeen, are approved and placed on file among the public records of the city clerk's office.
Moved by Councilor Armstrong, and seconded by Councilor Kets, Pretzer. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolved at the payrolls of the various departments of the city of Plattsburgh for the weekend in May tenth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of four hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-three cents, are authorized and allowed, and the mayor and the city clerk are hereby empowered and directed to sign warrants on the city chamberlain for the payment thereof.
Moved by Councilor, uh, Dowdell, and seconded by Councilor Ensel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolved at the reports as listed are hereby ordered received and placed on file among the public records of the city clerk's office.
Moved by Councilor Dowdell, seconded by Councilor Casper. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolved at the bills allotted by the common council for the weekend in May twelfth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents, are authorized and allowed, and the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to sign warrants on the city chamberlain for the payment thereof.
Moved by Councilor Casper, seconded by Councilor Dowdell. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is the opportunity for people in the public to please come up and speak. At this point, we ask you to confine yourself to any items actually on the agenda. We will have another opportunity to discuss any items at all at the end of the meeting. So, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll continue.
Resolved in accordance with the request, therefore the common council proves area carded to hold the Special Olympics Polar Plunge at the Plattsburgh City Beach on Saturday, November 19th, 2017.
Moved by Councilor Ensel, second by Councilor Dowdell. Discussion? By voting, it means you'll be in the fun, so roll call.
Councilor Armstrong?
Yeah. Okay, yes.
Councilor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councilor Ensel?
Yes.
Councilor Casper?
Conditional, yes.
Councilor Pretzer?
Yes.
Resolved in accordance with the request, therefore the common council proves North Country Food Co-op to hold a grand opening event on May 21st, 2017 from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM, closing two additional parking spaces adjacent to the Co-op's parklet and closing off the right side of Bridge Street for the duration of the event.
Councilor Armstrong, you move to table, is that correct?
Yeah.
Second by Councilor Pretzer. Uh, notice that you're on the table. Roll call?
Councilor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councilor Ensel?
Yes.
Councilor Casper?
Yes.
Councilor Pretzer?
Yes.
Resolved in accordance with the request, therefore the common council proves the request from promotions and special events coordinator Sandra Geddes to close the following streets.
I'd like to make a motion to move the resolution, to waive the reading and move the resolution, please.
Moved by Councilor Pretzer, second by Councilor Ensel, and that was as amended to have been closing at 5:00 PM on July 9th. Discussion? Roll call?
Councilor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councilor Ensel?
Yes.
Councilor Casper?
Yes.
Councilor Pretzer?
Yes.
Resolved in accordance with the request, therefore the common council proves request from promotions and special events coordinator Sandra Geddes to close the following streets to the metal of Plattsburgh.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading and move the resolution.
Moved by Councilor Pretzer, seconded by Councilor Dowdell. Discussion?
Well, I just want to point out that this is the resolution with the amended time. On September 9th. I thought that was...
July 9th for the previous one.
Councilor Pretzer?
Yes.
Resolved that in accordance with the request, therefore the common council approves the city chamberlain to reopen capital project H5110.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading and move the resolution.
Moved by Councilor Pretzer, second by Councilor Casper. Discussion? Roll call?
Councilor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councilor Ensel?
Yes.
Councilor Casper?
Yes.
Councilor Pretzer?
Yes.
Resolved that in accordance with the request, therefore the common council approves that the mayor be authorized to sign engineering consultant supplemental agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated for Oklahoma Home Loops to stabilization. The cost associated with this service is $200,000. Insufficient funding is available in capital project H5110.59, 2016, Old Bay Marina flood damage.
Moved by Councilor Casper, second by Councilor Armstrong.
Could you say again who the agreement was with that? Just kidding, sorry.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councilor Ensel?
Yes.
Councilor Casper?
Yes.
Councilor Pretzer?
Yes.
Resolved that in accordance with the request, therefore the common council approves that the mayor be authorized to sign engineering consulting services agreement with MJ Engineering and Land Survey PC for contract number 2017-03, Viennial Bridge Inspections. The cost associated with this service is $41,966 and will not be increased without prior council approval. Sufficient funding is available in capital project H5110.60, 2017, Vision Waterfront.
Moved by Councilor Ensel, second by Councilor Dowdell. Discussion? Roll call?
Councilor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councilor Ensel?
Yes.
Councilor Casper?
Yes.
Councilor Pretzer?
Yes.
Resolution, secret finding and negative declaration, Serenac River Trail, Phase Two Construction, how the city of Plattsburgh...
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading and move the resolution.
Moved by Councilor Pretzer, second by Councilor Dowdell. Discussion? Note that the term negative declaration isn't pejorative. It actually says that there's no bad findings, impact findings on this secret. Roll call?
Councilor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councilor Ensel?
Yes.
Councilor Casper?
Yes.
Councilor Pretzer?
Yes.
Resolved that in accordance with the request, therefore the common council approves that the mayor be authorized to sign mortgages landlord subordination agreement with Musco Finance LLC for contract number 179226, which is an agreement with Plattsburgh Little League Incorporated to install lighting system at the city of Plattsburgh property known as Penfield Park Little League Field, 30 Bailey Avenue, Plattsburgh, New York, 12901. There is no cost to the city of Plattsburgh associated with this agreement.
Moved by Councilor Dowdell, second by Councilor Ensel. Discussion? Roll call?
Councilor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councilor Ensel?
Yes.
Councilor Casper?
Yes.
Councilor Pretzer?
Yes.
Resolved that in accordance with the request, therefore the common council approves two firefighters to attend the crude by rail emergency training of Pueblo Paddle on Colorado from May 14th through 18th, 2017. Total cost will not exceed $200. Other expenses paid by CP Rail and replaced in overtime personnel cost paid by hazmat rate.
Moved by Councilor Armstrong, second by Councilor Casper. Discussion?
It's a pretty good deal.
Roll call?
Councilor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councilor Ensel?
Yes.
Councilor Casper?
Yes.
Councilor Pretzer?
Yes.
This is the opportunity in our agenda for any of the counselors to make a liaison report or bring up any new business. Councilor Ensel?
Kevin, I've been wondering. I had someone ask me if there's anything that we can do or that can be done on the corner, on the turn, right over the Perry Bridge onto South Platt where the little divider is at dusk and sometimes at night. It's kind of difficult to see it and they're afraid they, someone may lose their transmission going over. Is there anything that we can do to...
And also during the snow season when it's piled with snow, so...
We can sort of help with that and see if there isn't something that can be done to improve visibility.
Even painting the curb or something. And also, I guess the same question would come into play with the, with the rotary too. If there's something that's only inside curbing. Thank you.
Well, there's gonna be a lot of flowers there, so...
Is that what those are?
Oh, okay.
Um, what exactly, I mean, where does that concern come from? Has there been an accident on the road?
I just, I had a constituent ask me about it. They said that they had a hard time. And I was actually over there the other day and I saw a car turn and actually it looked like they were almost on an amusement park ride. They're this way going over the rotary.
Not paying attention. Oh, sorry. But it is, it is a weird turn. You have to really... People don't always seem to know how to use a rotor. Well, yeah, yeah. That, I mean, I think the concern is the way in which people interpret yield. Exactly. Yeah. So I don't think it's a structural problem as much as a...
Education.
Yeah. But, but with regard to the one onto South Platt, uh, you know, there have been people who have raised concerns, particularly during the snow season. Well, we did when it was first constructed too. And then Kevin, you had instructed us that, you used a term that the, um, that little island itself is, it's like you roll up it. It's not a curb. Right. It's a climbing.
It's got a mountable curve.
That's what you said, yeah.
It's designed to be a pedestrian refuge. So pedestrian crossing there was a huge, huge concern.
Right, yeah.
And doing some traffic calming and improvement pedestrian safety was one of the objectives. And we shortened that crosswalk up that was well over 60, I think it was closer to 80 or 90 feet.
Yeah.
And we shortened that up to, uh, like a fraction of that. I think it's about a third or a fourth of that now. And it does, it is, it's a lot of the traffic calming measures. You do, you know, you want to slow down the cars of pedestrian, but if you're not careful, if you're making a lazy turn, then you can hit that curb. But it is designed so you shouldn't be damaged during the...
I travel that every day. There's no left-hand turn either, right?
Coming out of South Platt is a left-hand turn. We were surprised to be found that the traffic counts for a number of movements, left-hand turn movements there was at least mean surprisingly low.
I think it was...
Or at least making about 10 turns there.
It was one out of 400, I recall hearing.
Yeah.
Well, and it's, it's similar to the newly constructed entrance to Club Road, which if you're not careful, you're going into the other lane. And people have complained about it, but it certainly slows everybody down, that very, you know, hard right turn there.
Thank you, Kevin.
Engineer Farrington also had a little coming out party for the Serenac River Trail yesterday. We had Jeff Olson from, from the Design Associates, the...
Alta Planning, yes.
Alta Planning that's helped with the trail. And they talked a little bit about the second phase and rolling out of the third phase last night and a couple of events here yesterday as well. And perhaps engineer, you could give us a little bit of an update on additional progress earlier today on the highway oil.
Sure. We had a reconstruction meeting for highway oil today, including the Atlantic testing will be doing third-party air monitoring. They're looking at first week of June to do the work and they don't expect that it should take more than about three, four days.
Thank you. Any other reports or new business?
Let me just ask, in terms of the DRI, we had, there was some type of discussion that included in that was money for, to hire or contract someone to administer. Is that the right word? Administer the grant?
Right, that could go in a couple of ways. The DOS allowed us to use 1% to 2% to create some additional capacity within the city to implement it. Obviously, our Office of Community Economic Development is very, very, working very hard just to do all the various paperwork and reporting along with it. So we've agreed that we need some more capacity there. And then on the individual projects, they could be led out to organizations like, for instance, the Lake City LDC, which is, by the way, we're currently revitalizing and putting back in place. They may administer a project where they may take some administrative fees to help administer subprojects as well. So administration could come in a couple of different ways, but won't amount to more than a few percent of the total project value at the end.
So is that, is that, is that a hiring process we're gonna go through or to find?
We haven't quite figured out how to do that. Since it's only a temporary project, we don't want to go through all the process of hiring somebody permanently and just delay them off in 18 months. So right now, Paul is exploring whether because it's grant funded, we would have some lead wages to find somebody temporarily. We've been working to try to figure that out for a few months now, actually. But we are getting quite anxious because we expect the DRI award should be made within the next month or so.
And also I would ask the police chief, there was some discussion about the movement of traffic to the city, the speeders. And you indicated to me there's a grant application that's being pursued?
Yes, we have a grant that we apply for every year and certainly I've received that, so the only process could be going after.
Okay, and how does that, and then how's that implemented?
It allows us to use those funds during overtime, put extra officers on the street strictly to enforce the traffic laws.
The traffic, okay.
Also related to the police department, you may have read the New York Times and also in the local papers, issue of the taxi cabs and whether they're properly reporting and publicizing fares and fare maps and that sort of thing. So I believe you all have had some discussion on enforcement of, uh, of the taxi responsibilities. And we all met a couple of weeks ago and discussed that a little bit as well, but obviously some more work is necessary.
Call all the things down to the station bay and conduct inspections to make sure they're compliant with the city code.
Thank you.
Does, can I ask, does that, when we had discussions previously, we talked about taxi drivers violating state law by smoking in the cabs. So would your inspection address that? And we were told at the time too, by the, at least one cab owner, that, well, we can't enforce what our drivers are doing.
By the way, the city code is read, it's only if the cab is occupied by a customer that they are not allowed to smoke in there. So it's obviously that's something we observe to address that or bad complaint based on taxi.
It's only when there are passengers that...
Yes.
Didn't draw that distinction.
Any other questions or reports or new business? Seeing none, this is the portion of our meeting where we ask for additional public comment and at this time it's on any topic. We ask you to please confine yourself to five minutes per topic. And if you have a number of people speaking on one topic, we ask to have you use a delegate if you could. So please come forward. Seeing none, drop a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilor Armstrong, second by Councilor Ensel. Roll call, please.
Councilor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councilor Ensel?
Yes.
Councilor Casper?
Yes.
Councilor Pretzer?
Yes.
There'll be a budget meeting beginning soon. I encourage any of you interested in the city budget to attend. And we'll be having these meetings about on a weekly basis for the next few weeks as we prepare for the council's five-year budget outlook. Thank you.